Welcome to tonight's meeting. Good evening. My name is Paula Reet, Mayor of Kingborough. It's my pleasure to welcome you all to the meeting on Monday the 6th of October 2025. Apologies, we've just got a bit of feedback. We have a new audio system that we will just try and adjust. Okay. I feel like I'm about to do karaoke. Okay, all right. Thank you very much. The time now being 5:30pm, I officially declare the meeting open. Welcome to those in the public gallery tonight and also to those who are watching along at home. Could I please ask that those who are here, please make sure that your mobile phones are either switched off or are on silent. Council now operates under the Local Government Meeting Procedures Regulations of 2025. And under these, I'm required to advise that: A) An audio or audiovisual recording is being made of the meeting; and B) All persons attending the meeting are to be respectful of and considerate towards other persons attending the meeting; and C) Language and conduct at the meeting that could be perceived as offensive, defamatory, or threatening to a person attending the meeting or listening to the recording is not acceptable. The audio recording of council meetings is made publicly available on our website and meetings are livestreamed on YouTube. And I'll now ask staff to confirm that the audio recording has started. Thank you. I wish to acknowledge the traditional custodians of this land, pay respect to elders past and present, and acknowledge today's Tasmanian Aboriginal community. Our attendees this evening are myself, councillor Reet, councillor Antoli, councillor Bain, councillor Cordova, councillor Dean, councillor Fox, councillor Richardson, and councillor Street. From our staff this evening, we have the CEO, Mr Stewart, the Director of Governance Recreation and Property Services, Mr Smee, the Director of Environment Development and Community Services, Ms Shakuti, our Manager of Legal and Property, Mr Basham, our Communications Lead, Ms Adams, and our Executive Assistant, Mrs Morton. We have apologies this evening from the Deputy Mayor, councillor Gladwrit, and councillor Midgley. We're on page one, confirmation of minutes. The motion is that the minutes of the open session of council meeting number 16, held on the 15th of September 2025, be confirmed as a true record. I'm looking for a mover and a seconder. Thank you councillor Fox, moved and seconded in councillor Cordova. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried. Our workshop's held since the last council meeting on the 22nd of September. Our workshop was held in relation to the capital project overview. Still on page two, declarations of interest. Does any councillor have an interest they would like to declare? No, thank you very much. Still on page two, transfer of agenda items. Is there any item on the agenda that a councillor would like to transfer from closed into open session or open into closed session? Thank you. Takes to questions without notice from the public. Does any member of the public wish to ask a question without notice? If you'd like to, please come to the microphone, state your name and the suburb in which you live before asking your question. Could I just remind people that questions are limited to three per person? They need to be concise, be clear, not be a statement and have minimal preamble, and of course not be defamatory, contain offensive language, or not relate to the activities of council. Thank you.
Thank you mayor, Mark Donellen from Huntingfield. My question is about bike parking at the Kingborough Community Hub. From what I've observed, in general, local councils do not reserve parking spaces on streets or council land for the exclusive use of particular user groups, unless, in the rare case when this does happen, I expect the parking spaces are clearly signed to inform people. So it struck me when someone reported to me that they had been told by Kingborough Hub staff that bike parking at the Kingborough Community Hub is for the exclusive use of people attending the hub. Does the council have a policy that reserves bike parking at the Kingborough Community Hub for the exclusive use of hub patrons?
Mr Smee, could you assist us with that one?
Through you mayor, I'm not aware of such a policy, but I'll take that on notice. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Further questions from the public? Just your full name and the suburb, please, before you commence.
Joel Hodson Middleton.
Sorry, I didn't catch your surname.
Hodson, H O D S O N.
Thank you.
Council own roads that are not actively maintained, so roads which are not part of their maintenance schedule. Can council inform the public why these roads are not on the maintenance schedule? And what liability does council hold due to these roads? For instance, if there is an emergency such as fire and access cannot be made by emergency services, or in the event of personal or financial loss or loss of amenity?
Unfortunately, our director of engineering had to go home unwell, so I'm not sure if the CEO can help us... Or no, Mr Smee said he will try. We might have to take it on notice.
Through you mayor, council has a list of council maintained roads, and then there are roads that are either owned by the Crown or they are private roads. And council does not maintain roads that are designated as either private or sections of Crown Road over which are not included on council's municipal map of maintained roads. In respect to liability, liability is always an issue that needs to be determined on a case-by-case merit. However, if it's not maintained by council, then my understanding would be that council would not be liable for a road it doesn't maintain.
Specifically, these are roads that are owned by council and I've been informed that they're owned by council. For instance, an example is Major's Road in Middleton.
We might, we might take that on notice, given that we don't have our director of engineering services available, if that's okay. But if you've got a follow-up question, it's still fair to put that, so then we can get him to respond to all of them.
So in relation to that, what does this lack of maintenance mean for the new planning scheme? Particularly within agriculture, rural, rural living and landscape conservation zones, where to meet zone acceptable solutions or performance criteria, landholders must have access to a road maintained by a road authority or right of carriageway to a subsequently maintained road.
Ms Shakuti.
Through you mayor. I think I'll have to take that one on notice, however, I suppose I'd like to point out that our road maintenance program and zoning are unrelated activities at council. So we are not planning our road maintenance in accordance with current zoning, but I will take it on notice so we can give you a full and comprehensive answer.
Final question?
Yes.
All right. I'm unsure if council are aware of a certain level of angst, fear and concern felt in the community towards the planning department specifically, more than a general feeling that a community may have towards any particular council. A report was commissioned under the previous mayor and general manager and conducted by Andrew James. This report raised concerns between the relationship of the planning department and general public. However, as far as I'm aware, it was never acted on, the recommendations within the report. Can you inform the public whether this report has or will be used to inform any policies or decisions regarding the structure and/or culture within the planning department and more broadly within council, and how it deals with residents?
Thank you. I will ask the CEO to address that, but before I do, certainly, I appreciate your comments that there is a level of angst in the community and some of that is directed at our staff within the planning area. And obviously that is of concern for all of us as councillors, but also we want to ensure that, you know, we are not having individual staff members that are being vilified. And so we do need to ensure that any conversations and discussion in the public arena about planning issues does not target specific staff, because we have a duty as councillors to ensure the health and wellbeing of all of our employees here at council. So I'd just like to place that on record and ask the CEO to perhaps elaborate on the answer in relation to the report.
Yeah, thank you mayor and through you. So the report was undertaken in 2019, I believe, and the majority of the findings of that report have been actioned. I guess if I take a step back and along the same lines as the mayor was talking about, we have a responsibility as an organisation to continually be evaluating how we're doing our job and continually seeking to improve, I guess, the way we do things, testing whether we're doing things in the right way and seeking to continually challenge ourselves to do and be better. So there's a component of that that is an ongoing piece of work for us as an organisation. This isn't just about planning, this is right across the organisation. And I guess what I would like us to do is to be having that challenge for ourselves. But I also would like to say, you know, along the same lines as the mayor, that we seek positive and constructive engagement from our community in terms of how they engage with council as well. We've got a responsibility to each other to make sure that we're being the best council we can be, and we do that through having a respectful and mutually, yeah, constructive engagement with our community. So to come back to your question, yes, the majority of those items were actioned and I've just given you a little bit of extra context about, I guess, the challenge we set ourselves as an organisation.
Thank you for your questions. Does anybody else have any questions they'd like to ask? Thank you. Just your name and the suburb, please.
Clark from Great Bay on Bruny.
Is that Clark with an E on the end?
Yeah, with an E.
Thank you.
Just furthermore to that.
Just furthermore to that question Charlie's about the constructive engagement, a list of the affected properties was given out, twenty three pages, and it was just an absolute hotchpotch. You couldn't, you had to read the whole twenty three pages. To me personally, I just feel that that's just an affront to the rate payers. I'm sure it could have been just done very simply to either alphabetically or by suburb or whatever. It was just, it's just crazy to me that that could have got through planning and into the community. So can that be addressed, please?
The CEO?
Through you mayor. So as part of the process that council's been through as the, in the exhibition of the draft LPS as part of the Tasmania Planning Scheme, there's a number of different tools that council developed in order to try and help people understand the context of their property. That included mapping, where people could go in, have a look at the maps, see what their existing zone is, see what the zone would be under the proposed new scheme. There was even a slider to go backward and forward so you could see the distribution of zones across the municipal area and see what the changes that were proposed looked like there. So that was just one of the tools that council developed at the time to try and make it easier and more accessible for people. In terms of the list of properties impacted, I suspect, are you talking about the things that came out in the, in recent media? Because the Mercury published a list of properties that, I agree, they were in a confusing order and a lot of pages to try and leaf through. So that wasn't something that was directly published by council, that was done by third party media. And we have tried to make it easier and more accessible for people to access material. But I take your point around, you know, an alphabetised list of street names. I'll take that bit on notice to find out whether or not we've done that and whether, and what options we have to make that information more accessible.
Thank you for your question. Further questions, please come to the microphone. Sorry, name, your name?
Toby Burgess Wilson from Oyster Cove.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add to Richard's point then. I've been doing a letter drop today, trying to see if there's any people who still don't know about this LCZ zone change. Talked about thirty landowners, left about another seventy letters at people's houses. Out of those thirty people I talked to today, only one knew about it. So the message has not got out. And when it was first changed in two thousand and fifteen from primary industry, rural resource, rural sea, whatever we all were, I don't think any of us knew about that change. I didn't on both my properties.
So, sorry, so your question is?
I just wanted to inform you a bit of stuff I've learnt today. When you say you go to all this effort, no one knew in two thousand and fifteen and very few of us knew this time. So the effort was not made good enough, full stop.
Sorry.
It's not a question, it's just a bit of informative for stuff of what I've learnt today driving around all over this municipality.
Thank you. I'll take it as a question because it's public question time.
I do, I do have a question though regarding the other gentleman's.
Well, before you go on to that, I will take this one as a question so that we can respond to it.
Okay.
Look, I think in hindsight, we probably should have written individual letters to every landowner. However, we, however, at the time, we believed that if we did provide a leaflet that went into the rates notice that is, that goes to every single person who pays rates, that you would hope that is read, along with the other things. We went above and beyond the minimum statutory requirements. And, you know, like it's, we, I believe that, you know, like I said, we should have done an individual letter. We can't change that now, but we have done more than is required and more than any other council has done in trying to ensure that people are aware that these changes have been on the way. And perhaps the CEO might like to just add to that.
Yeah, through you mayor. So the, that notice that the mayor was alluding to went out with the twenty twenty three rates notice. So there was a flyer involved in that. But, but putting that, putting that aside, you know, there is a statutally prescribed process in terms of the transition to the Tasmania Planning Scheme, which is described under the loophole, which is the relevant act. Council, like the mayor said, has met those obligations and exceeded them. I guess what, what we've heard loud and clear over the last little while is that that hasn't reached the people that needed to hear, right? So we need to acknowledge that there's been a large number of people who haven't heard that message. We've, we've heard that back from you, we acknowledge that. What we need to do is think about where we are now and the way forward. So there's hearings underway with the Tasmania Planning Commission. We need to be having conversations with the commission about where we're at, what the, what the solutions are here and how we can ensure that where people haven't felt like they've had the opportunity to have their voice heard, that, that there's, I guess, an acknowledgement of that through the process. I don't know what that, that process looks like at this stage. A certain degree of this is outside of our, our context and our, our ability to define what that looks like. It's not our process, it is a state process. But we need to be acknowledging what we've heard from you all and taking active steps from here.
I'd like to follow that with a further question. Is the bare min, is this bare minimums, you know, that you've got to do enough? And do you not work for us as a community? Maybe, maybe we can lift the standard significantly in the future for anything else. If possible, please.
Look, I certainly, it is an interesting one where we went above the bare minimum. The processes have been, well, we did, that is a fact. There, there is, you can shake your heads all you like. It's a fact we went way above the bare minimum. We ran community dropping sessions and invited people to come along that nowhere else did when outside of the actual mandated period that we had to do that. So there are things that we did in addition. Perhaps it is something that is worth the state government considering in future for future changes, that there needs to be overall a far greater standard of engagement that they set as a minimum. But I acknowledge, we, we in hindsight should have written individually. We did not do that. We are hearing what you're saying now. We do hope that the message gets out. I commend you for, for doing those letterbox drops and for the work that you're putting in to, to making sure that people are aware and hopefully with the media that has been around this, those people who haven't been engaging with the process will now engage with the process. I believe that they can call the TPC to seek how they can engage. I think it's by, if I'm not mistaken, it is by seeking to add on to additional. I've been off on leave, so I'll just have to check with the CEO just in relation to, to that so I don't mislead anybody. CEO?
Through you mayor, I don't want to set expectations about what the TPC may or may not do in regard to supplementary engagement with the process. That's not for us to, to determine. So I note the mayor's comments, but also, yeah, can't, can't make a commitment.
Just following on from the gentleman, two people prior to me, about fire trails on council land. I've grown up in the Oyster Cove area nearly all my life and all the fire trails across all the hills used to be open as a child. They're all blocked off now. We live, most of these people in this room live in end of roads and stuff. The Tasmanian Fire Service will not come to an active fire zone if there's only one way in and one way out. By closing off all these fire trails with gates and big rocks and big trenches, et cetera, you're basically leaving us to fight a fire ourselves. It's really scary. I would really like it if we could maybe change our attitude to opening fire trails up. It really is a death trap.
CEO?
I guess my response to that is thank you for the comment. We will look into the situation. I'll need to get some advice from the team.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your questions. Anybody else like to ask a question?
Good afternoon. My name's Nick Bart, I'm from Neaka. And I grew up in Ferntree and just moved into Kimbra last year. Following on from Toby's question, I only just found out about clause TC C four today and I'm a little bit alarmed. My reading of it is that it says that landscape conservation zone should not be applied to land where the priority is for residential use in development. I happen in Tasmania to know the original builders of my house since, which was in the nineteen seventies, and it has been continuously a residence. Can you please justify why council are going against the Tasmania State guidelines?
Ms Shakuti?
Through you mayor, I'd have to take it on notice in terms of the specifics of your particular property. But I would also like to point out that in those guidelines, the section eight guidelines that you're referring to, there is multiple criteria in terms of applying an existing zone to the scheme and in applying a new scheme, a new zone to areas in the municipality. So it's not just one criteria in isolation, but we'll take it on notice in relation to your specific property.
Thank you. Further question?
I have a further question, thank you. So when applying a new zoning type with discretionary clauses, land value drops that is established throughout other places in Tasmania, can you please describe how council will compensate me for my loss in land value?
Ms Shakuti?
Through you mayor, we have heard this concern through the municipality. To, I suppose, our knowledge, we have not had certain validity, certainty in validation of that. Not, not to say we, we don't hear that concern and acknowledge the worry that it is causing our residents and our landowners. So in terms of the application of the, the TPS, it's not a consideration in, various things are not a consideration unless they're listed under the Act or in the guidelines. So that limits us in terms of what we can and can't consider when applying the zones.
A further question?
Yes, please. So in further consideration, when my insurance company declines to insure me, how will council act to make me whole?
Ms Shakuti?
Through you mayor, again, not something that we have certainty of occurring and certainly encourage any landowners where this does come to fruition to, to raise that with us. Again, like I said, in terms of how we, what we can and can't consider under the legislation when we're applying the zones, matters such as insurance and land value are not something that we are able to consider.
So may I suggest that council do consider these things?
Thank you. Any further questions?
Alison Rogers, Tinderbox. The planning scheme that existed before the interim planning scheme, just requesting whether council are able to put that back up on their website. The TPC website allows you to go in to look at old schemes, but it's not there. And at my hearing, I asked for a copy of that and I were unable to find it. I understand that council does have a copy of it. However, we haven't been able to find it. So just wondering whether that can be reinstated onto your website or onto the TPC website?
CEO?
Through you mayor, I'll need to take that one on notice, but there's no reason why, if, if we can, we can't put that, that document in an accessible format for you.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Hi, I'm Nat Kingston from Blackmans Bay. Just in regard, oh, just a little bit of context around my question. And sorry, I'm a bit nervous. In twenty twenty one, twenty two, on my property in Blackmans Bay, we did a quite substantial renovation, extension. And we're protected by some full on stuff. I won't go, I'm not a planner. And we went through the appropriate reports and the things that you need to do and I'm not here to complain about that. What I'm here to ask, because I just cannot anywhere on any platform and even in my hearing, get an answer on the reluctance to zone an area rural living when its existing purposes align and there's uses that already align with that. I just cannot get an answer on the reluctance. And yesterday it was asked in a public meeting to the deputy mayor and her response was, can I ask you a question? And everyone let her ask a question, so it was deflected. So it's just a question I don't understand and I don't think anyone else does. Am I speaking? Thank you. We just don't understand the reluctance.
It's, before Ms Shakuti answers, I think one of the difficulties is that, particularly as councillors, we don't know the, we don't have access to all the staff's files. So it's very difficult for us to be able to understand why an individual property has been proposed as, you know, in a particular zone or not. And I suspect that our staff wouldn't have that answer here, but we can provide you probably one on notice. But Ms Shakuti or the CEO, whichever, who, Ms Shakuti?
Through you mayor, thank you for your question. So in terms of your specific property, again, we can take that on notice. I suppose as a general comment, we have taken the approach and, you know, discussed this at the council meeting where the section thirty five F report was brought to council, that we absolutely have an openness to, when we're discussing properties at the, the hearing, to alternative land uses if they can be appropriately applied. So what will be referenced and it'll, it'll depend on property by property is the guidelines, the section eight guidelines that the commission have issued around how the zones get applied. So the different considerations in those, as well as, I suppose, various policies and strategies, including the southern land use, regional land use strategy. So there's a whole, I suppose, suite of factors that have to be considered and that might be why, I suppose, a succinct answer hasn't been provided yet. The commission will be the decision maker in terms of whether it can be applied for your property and they'll be looking to all of those things. Does that help?
It does and it helps me ask the next question because I've had the hearing and just even more nervous than here. And it's nothing like what I do for a job, which is standing in front of people, which is completely different. And I've looked at all those documents and the Stirlus I should have looked a bit closer at, but that's hindsight. What, what I took away from my hearing, and I'm hoping you'll know the answer to this, is they're looking at a specific area, which I believe I'm in, on the fifth of November is they're looking at a specific area, which I believe I'm in, on the 5th of November, and they've made a specific time. So could I logically take away from that, that they'll be making those decisions about the properties within that area on that date? Would that be what I can assume? Because when I left, it, like, you're just so up in the air. Do you, have you any knowledge of that thing on the November the 5th, I think, or the eleventh? Anyway.
Ms. Shakuti.
Through you, Mayor. No, I'm sorry, I don't. But I can take it on notice and we can follow up directly.
Lovely. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you very much. Any further questions?
May I can pop up again because I've only asked one question?
Yes.
So just further to Natalie's question. So I believe she's talking about the directive from the TPC on that day for the planners to reconsider their position on the application of the landscape conservation zone on those properties and maybe to a larger extent, the whole municipality. Given that that directive has been given, are any of the councillors going to be involved in discussions with the planners in relation to the outcome of that discussion?
CEO.
Through you, Mayor. I would need to have a look at the specific directive you're referring to. Obviously, there's been, you know, as there are through these types of processes, a large number of directives that come out, which are effectively requests for further information through from, through from council. I guess a couple of pieces of context that I would add. And I appreciate this isn't answering your question directly. That the feedback that we provide as part of those responses, again, is more information that is put into the process. And coming back to the previous question that was asked by Ms. Kingston, is that I would suspect there's not going to be a definitive answer at that date. What would happen is the TPC would receive that information and it would go into the overall decision-making process as part of the, as part of this whole LPS process to be defined later in the process, which will probably be next year. They've indicated sort of April, May is our best estimate at this point in time. So I guess as it relates to the directions that have come out and the responses through to councillors, councillors haven't been directly involved in those responses thus far. If there are any that are considered to be things that councillors need to be aware of, we will look at that and how we communicate that through to councillors, which I think answers the key part of your question.
Just, you might just want to add an example of some of the directives that we've had to date. There's been about 60. And so a lot of them are quite administrative in process. That might just be helpful information.
Yeah. And I'm sure, through you, Mayor, lots of people might have been, you know, watching. I know how engaged our community's been with this process through the hearings. But in many cases, it's some detailed mapping that might be requested or further pieces of information to help contextualise some of the things that have come out of the hearings to help the commission be informed in making their decisions. So there's many pieces of response that are fundamentally in the detail that staff are going to be able to respond to. But councillors won't have the context to be able to respond to. I guess what I'm saying is if there's more strategic responses that are required through this process, we will look at how we draw that out and make sure that councillors are aware of them.
And my last question, just further to that. I think it makes, whilst we have been told that the council's involvement in this process, apart from obviously attending hearings and asking questions, has ended and that the decision now lies with the TPC. Based on the questions and the directives that the TPC have been giving during those hearings, it's fairly obvious, and I think makes common sense, that the TPC are actually going to consider what your planning staff will go back to in relation to their considerations and perhaps different conclusions on the way that they may well have applied these zones. And I think that they will, because the planners are on the ground in your municipality and obviously involved on a day-to-day basis with the planning in the municipality, that any recommendations that those planners then come back to as a result of answering those directives, that the TPC will take reasonably seriously. So is there an acknowledgement from council that it's important that those planners and the council itself get involved in that process and put forward those recommendations in a way that the TPC are obviously going to take note of and strongly consider in their decision-making process?
Before I hand over to the CEO to address the substantive part of that question, for those who were here or were watching when we considered the Section 35 report that went to the TPC, that report did summarise in detail all of the submissions that had been received from property owners. And during the course of the discussion around the council table, we wanted to draw out a number of those key issues. And so we did that in our covering letter. There was quite a lengthy debate about what would go into that letter so that we could make sure that the views that were being collectively provided to us were highlighted in sending that off to the TPC. So we did make sure that it was drawn to their attention. And, but I'll ask the CEO to provide some additional information.
Yeah, through you, Mayor. So what the mayor said is correct. So there was a covering letter that we wrote that went off. And at its heart, it said that we were open to considering all feedback and all, I guess, responses during the process. So we weren't going into the hearings with a closed view of what was considered within our 35F report being the final position. So I guess to provide reassurance, council is open to hearing the views that come through the hearings and making adjustments to the final scheme, acknowledging that our position in that is to provide support and context to the commissioners, not be the decision-makers. But I guess if it is some reassurance, we are open to that. I guess, so, and without, I guess, being able to make commitments that aren't within our capacity to do so. You know, from everything that I've heard and conversations I've had, the TPC are responsive to those, I guess, concerns that people have been raising. Where the solutions are is something that obviously I know they'll be considering as part of the processes they go through it. We have proposed some solutions, including the PPZ alternative zoning within our control. I know that is not necessarily meeting all the concerns that have been raised by our community, but it is some willingness and intent from council to try and make the final outcome work for our community. I guess my final comment in response is we have a partnership with our community. We fundamentally, as an organisation, are here to represent the interests of our community and make sure that we're addressing the things that you want and people are going to be able to live in the way they want to on their properties alongside making sure that we're undertaking responsible planning for maintaining the things that people know and love about Kimbra. So there's always an inherent balance in that. So we need to be striking that balance in terms of how we respond and how we work with the Planning Commission through this process. And that's something we take really seriously. And so, you know, the response that we've had from the community is obviously a really clear indication that people do have concerns at the moment. And so we are 100% listening to that and we will be doing our level best to make sure that the outcome that we come out with, whilst it mightn't always make everyone happy, and I can't promise that everyone will be happy at the end of the process, we will be trying to make sure that it's fair and reasonable and it's met the objectives that the state have put in place through undertaking the Tasmanian planning scheme.
Thank you. I haven't quite answered my question. So can I maybe, can I rephrase it a little?
Sure.
Yep. So what I'm asking is that in the hearings that I've been in and have listened into, the TPC are appearing to be quite reasonable and open-minded. However, the people representing the council at these hearings seem to be quite fixed and rigid to a point. And what I want to know is that, given that that directive has been given, I think we're wanting the council to come back with a recommendation. We don't want council to come back with just additional information about maps and blah, blah, blah. We actually want them to voice a new opinion rather than the one that they've been holding their line on. So are they going to be open-minded? And as I said, can the council get involved with this in relation to actually changing a position and actually going back into these hearings with a different recommendation rather than holding the line? That's what I want to know.
I do applaud your enthusiasm in the round of applause for Ms. Rogers. But if you could please refrain from participating from the meeting, from the public gallery, it would be appreciated because it will, it will delay proceedings somewhat. I know. Call me a killjoy, but we have, we have meeting procedures. The CEO.
Yeah, through you, Mayor. So we stay, I guess, regularly in touch with our staff that are representing council through this process. I've been to one of the hearings and I've also tuned in online a few times just to listen and how they're going. I guess in terms of the direct answer to the question, we need to make sure that we are responding to the essence of the questions that are being posed by the Planning Commission. Through the process, we will continue to do that. So respond to the questions that are, answering the questions that they've asked. I guess if they're asking a more general question, then I'll take that on notice with the team about how we address that. And obviously, as leadership, we need to firstly be respecting the expertise of our staff that are the experts in this area. I'm not a planner, but at the same time, we do need to be making sure that it's achieving the aspiration that council has for how we deliver the planning across the region and meeting the expectations of council in that. So I again, understand that I probably haven't answered the question to your satisfaction. But please be assured, we are watching this process really carefully. And we do want to make sure that it meets the, that we've done everything we can to fairly implement the new scheme within what's in council's control.
It's a statement at the end that you have applied differently to a lot of the other municipalities. So we're, and we're aware of that. So I guess take that into consideration in those conversations, please.
Thank you. Truly noted. Is there anybody else who'd like to ask a question?
Jamie King, Tinderbox. Just to further on from Alison's question as well. The CEO said he's watched about three hearings online. And he also mentioned earlier on about our engagement with watching online. I'd like to know, as members of council, sorry, I'm a bit nervous, but how you guys, you guys as a planning authority, also watching these hearings and listening to the words of the Tasmanian Planning Commission?
I can see various, I mean, obviously I can't speak on behalf of all councillors, but I can see various nods. The other thing that we have been privy to, as is publicly available information, is that councillors have all received copies of every single representation that was made and have been encouraged to read through those so that we can get an adequate understanding of the feelings of property owners. I know that I sifted through a large quantity of them and I know my colleagues have as well. So please don't think for a moment that councillors aren't taking this seriously. Obviously, for some who are employed full-time, it can be very difficult to get to, physically get to the hearings and to be able to listen to them. But each one of us who are representing our community actively watching this and being involved where we can and through the discussions we've had around this table to make sure that we have the adequate information.
We also are taking time off work and people are spending thousands of dollars on this as well. So I just wanted that noted as well.
I appreciate that. And I understand that this is very hard for a lot of people.
And worrying, distressful?
Yep. I acknowledge all of that. And, you know, your home is your castle. At the risk of making it sound like, you know, the castle, your home is your safe place and you want to make sure that the security in the future of your home and your family and your loved ones is secure and in a way in which you want to live on that property in the future. I acknowledge that. And I, I, you know, it's, things affecting your house are really very, very emotional and very stressful. It's, you know, on the list of things that psychologists will provide you, on the things that can be the most stressful life experiences. Things about buying and selling property or, you know, moving house or things involving your home are very stressful. And I acknowledge that. And I hope that, you know, as a community, we can be resilient together through this and work to a solution.
I therefore ask, wide as Kimbra council, other councils have taken in considerations with their planning of impacts, even though it wasn't part of the minimum requirements, have identified it and have not zoned properties as such due to their considerations beyond the minimums.
Look, I can't, I don't know whether the CEO and Ms. Shakuti can talk about other councils and how they have treated this. I cannot speak with any authority on that. I do know that there are, I was looking at some maps with the CEO earlier today and I know that there are quite a few properties that were zoned into LCZ in other parts of the state. I think it was the Clarence map we had, which had quite a few on there that I was actually surprised at the number. We haven't been able to get a statewide figure. I know there's over a thousand properties in the Huon Valley, I believe, that were put into LCZ. I don't know whether either of you can speak to the approach of other councils. CEO.
Through you, Mayor. So no, I can't speak to the approach of other councils and I think it would be inappropriate for me to try and do so. I guess the context around the application of LCZ within Kimbra.
That's the question I'm asking. Yep. So I'm not questioning, I'm just asking why Kimbra, why are we so different?
Yeah. So without going through the various criteria that were considered by the planners in terms of coming up with the, I guess, proposal that is currently sitting with the Planning Commission for consideration. The, there's, there's a balance of considerations, right? So obviously, with the properties that you all own, they're obviously special properties with a number of aspects and things like that. And I'm not trying to advocate for one position over another here. I'm saying that a decision needs to be made by the team in terms of what was proposed. And that needs to consider a variety of different aspects, which Deliza's mentioned through the statewide planning provisions. I'm not saying we have that right or wrong. That's, again, it's a starting point. It's a hypothesis that then goes into the process with the Planning Commission around testing that. We did have ongoing conversations with the Planning Commission through the development of the draft. So before it went out for exhibition, we were having conversations with the commission around how those zones would be applied. They were satisfied to a degree that we had met a threshold where it was appropriate to go to exhibition. So again, I'm not trying to say one's right or wrong, but there was a process, there was considerations about how it was to be applied. how it was to be applied. The next stage of the process, which we're in at the moment, is to test the validity of that. Your voices are all really important in that conversation. And as we've talked about earlier, I know that the Planning Commission are listening carefully to that. So yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a mixture of an arts, an art and a science, I guess, around how it's done. And, and hopefully at the end of it, we get to a really good result.
Further questions? Please come to the microphone.
Toby Burgess, Wilson, Oyster Cove. As the leadership group of this council, are you guys aware of just like the public opinion, well, the decrease in public opinion of the planning department and how hard it is to get things through this council compared to what it was 15, 20 years ago, when it was one of the best councils to work with? Like, it was, it was a brilliant council to work with. I've put a lot of buildings through this council and many others. And this place was brilliant. And the public opinion now is like head and shoulders, the worst, along with Hobart Council. Are you guys aware of that? And do you care about that?
CEO?
Yeah, through you, Mayor. Look, councils are a, a government construct that is here to serve our community, right? I don't think anyone will, will argue with that. And so achieving outcomes where people find council an organisation that's easy to work with, that you can be proud of, is an aspiration I've got. I'm aware that that probably sounds a bit naff right at the moment, saying that, that local government can be something that you're proud of. That's the aspiration I a hundred percent hold for this organisation. So I do take really seriously the, the reputation that this organisation has out there in our community. And we've, we've got a, a job to do to build trust and confidence with, with our community. That will take time. I've got no illusions of that. And we need to be make sure, making sure that we're, we're engaging, we're transparent, we're communicating, acknowledge all those things and acknowledge we could have done much, much better through this process because clearly the response is that we haven't done that. So just can I?
Please don't interrupt the CEO.
So I acknowledge all of that. I'm really aware of comments that we have from, from various members of the community about things that they're frustrated by. I get them on a, on a regular basis. I guess that it's something that is, is my job to, to think about what the, the perception is out there and making sure that we're doing the job that we should be doing to, to deliver on the aspirations of our community.
Final question?
No, just to make that last question clear, I wasn't talking about this current stuff that's going on. I was just talking about DAs and BA application and just the general sentiment in the community. Just, just to make that clear.
Thank you. Any further questions? Nothing further? Come on, I know some of you've got some burning questions. Don't be shy. No? All right. Thank you very much. And I appreciate the manner in which the questions were asked. And we do appreciate all of you attending tonight to make your views known and, and hopefully to receive some further information from us. Questions on notice from the public? At the time the agenda was compiled, there were no questions on notice from the public. If you do wish to submit a question on notice, you can do so by completing the relevant form on our website or by emailing ksc@kingborough.taz.gov.au. Questions without notice from councillors? Does any councillor wish to ask a question without notice? Councillor Antaly?
Thank you, Mayor. And thanks to everyone in the gallery that's here today and shared. I've got two questions. Yesterday, I was at the town hall meeting at Margate Hall. And the organiser was concerned that there wasn't enough time for the meeting to properly function. And myself and the deputy mayor, who were present for part of it, said we would advocate that they would be able to have that time without penalty to them. When they were ready to lock up the automatic lockup system, which is done via an app on your phone that you place against the lock, would not lock the actual hall. And I must admit, they were, they did go beyond their time, but there should be a mechanism nonetheless for them to lock and then a payment can be made later for going over time or that discussion. So instead, they had to call, and I was physically present, the after hours number, which went to what appears to be an overseas call centre who was quite confused as to how to handle and service us. And I don't know what happened in the end, but I was told that if the lock does not automatically lock, that we have to call council and there will be a $150 call out charge for a staff member to come to lock what is essentially an automatic locking door that has some sort of central locking capacity. Can I put this on, can I get a comment about this strange scenario, if anyone has an idea?
I'll ask Mr Smee to address that, just for the information of people here tonight. We did move in several of our halls to an automated system, which was somewhat more contemporary than handing out keys and having people to pick up keys and return keys and the risk of keys being duplicated or lost and so on. I know we've had some teething problems with a couple of them, but Mr Smee, you might be able to assist us?
Through you, Mayor. It's not an overseas call centre. It's Golden Electronics based in Hobart who receive these calls. You are correct, there is a automated system. Clearly there needs to be some improvements in the process in relation to when a booking goes overtime. And I will look into that.
Thank you. Councillor Antaly?
Thank you for the clarification.
Second question?
Yes, I do. The, the caller at the other end had a very strong accent, so it very much gave us the impression it was overseas, but I appreciate the clarification. I understand, I read in the newspapers somewhere that, and I'm, and I'd like some clarification about what percentage of the total LCZ our council has. My, my memory seems to suggest it was well over 50% of the state's LCZs are based in Kingborough. Can anyone clarify what they're aware from? I'm not too sure if it was Pulse Media or the Mercury that brought that up. Can anyone clarify on the numbers?
I don't believe we can, Ms Shakuti, because I've been interested in this.
Right, okay.
Have tried Googling actually to see how many properties, given we're the last council to go onto the scheme. I was hoping to find that exact figure. And I'm not aware that we've been able to do it. Ms Shakuti?
Through you, Mayor. No, we haven't been able to ascertain that number. It's, you can go on the list map and you can see the zoning, but it doesn't give you the data that sits behind how many properties. We have requested that information, my understanding from the TPC, and are waiting for a response.
Yeah, I have a vague recollection. Thank you. That it was in the Mercury, but just because it's in the Mercury doesn't mean it's truth. So I just wondered if anyone had an idea. Thanks. That's all from me.
Thank you. Councillor Bain?
Thank you, Mayor. Just have a question. It's as part of council submission to the TES Planning Commission, we have the new zone called the Kingborough Bushland and Coastal Living Zone proposed to be created, with I think over 700 properties recommended to be transferred to this zone. So questions relate to that. Has the Tasmanian Planning Commission indicated if they're supportive of allowing this zone to be added or offered any timeframes around when a decision will be made?
Ms Shakuti?
Through you, Mayor. They've indicated that they're open to it and hearing submissions from representatives attending the hearings. They haven't indicated a timeframe. So we will have to probably wait further into the hearings when they've had an opportunity to hear more representations before they make any decision regarding whether they would support that particular purpose zone or not.
Councillor Bain?
Just a follow up question if I can. So if this zone is accepted by the TES Planning Commission as an option, will this component, is this component likely to be re-advertised so that other property owners have the ability to register interest in being transferred to this zone?
Ms Shakuti?
Through you, Mayor. Again, and I feel like we're always deferring to the commission, but that is a decision for the commission to make. We have indicated to the commission that in terms of any decisions regarding the LCZ, that they communicate directly with all potential LCZ zone properties. And if the proposed new zone or particular purpose zone was to be supported, we would be encouraging the commission to undertake more broad community consultation.
Councillor Bain, anything further? Any further questions from councillors? No, thank you. That now takes us to questions on notice from councillors. There was one in relation to sealing of roads from councillor Cordova with a response from Ms Clark. Now we're on page three, petition still being actioned. There are no petitions still being actioned. And petitions in the last period, there was a petition received in relation to installation of footpaths and upgrades on Cleburne Street, Kingston, with a recommendation on page three. And I'm looking for a mover and a seconder, please. I've got a mover in councillor Cordova and a seconder in councillor Fox. Councillor Cordova?
Thank you. So this is a petition with sixty, fifty six signatures, rather, to install new footpaths, such that both sides of the entire street have footpaths. And we also request that council reseal and repair, replace the curb and gutter in the section of Cleburne Street from 24 to the junction of Marinua Road. I think it's, this now embarks upon a process where council will consider that and, and then potentially refer it to the appropriate department. So I look forward to receiving the recommendation from council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cordova. Any further discussion? I'll put the recommendation, moved by councillor Cordova, seconded by councillor Fox. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Motion is carried unanimously. Takes us to page four, fire risk abatement policy 4.7, with a recommendation on page five. Looking for a mover and a seconder. I've got a mover in councillor Cordova, seconder in councillor Bain. Councillor Cordova?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. This is fairly prosaic. It's, the policy here has been proven effective across the municipality, resulting in robust and well managed fire abatement procedure. It's undergone review and there are some minor, minor changes. For example, the addition of 2.2.7, any assessment tool or methodology result undertaken by a qualified person concerning fire risk is added to the definitions. Ultimately, it's basically acknowledging that council has a responsibility, recognises that bushfire is a natural hazard in our environment, and we need to do what we can to help minimise that ongoing risk, both to property and to people's health and wellbeing. I think the fact that it's worked very well so far is important. And also that it outlines the, the scope and the screening that takes place where council officers are able to conduct inspections. And it also raises the, the matters that are considered when assessing fire risk, the extent and type of vegetation, the materials stored on properties, all kinds of things which are available there on the report. So only minor changes and I commend the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cordova. Any further discussion? Councillor Antaly?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is with regards to this abatement policy, which I think it's pretty rudimentary, the changes. It of course talks to the fact that it's affected by bylaws and has to, and can be superseded by bylaws. So can I, can I get a feel from someone on how the tree bylaw and our biodiversity offset policy affects the ability for us to implement aspects of what's intended in the fire abatement?
Mr Basham?
Which has, I'd like, sorry, I'd like to know which has precedent as well. Thank you.
Mr Basham?
Through you, Mayor. Subject to Mr Shakuti's further information if required. The issuing of an abatement notice, my understanding is actually exempts the clearance under the provisions of the planning scheme and if ever required, the bylaw.
So the bylaw has?
Sorry, just remember to pause, wait for me to.
Yes.
With the new AV system, we make it very difficult for the recording otherwise. Councillor Antaly?
So thank you for that, Mr Basham. So the, the abatement has superseding over, is that right?
Mr Basham?
Through you, Mayor. It would make the requirement for a planning permit or otherwise exempt.
Thank you.
Councillor Antaly, nothing further? Any further discussion? No. Councillor Cordova, did you want to sum up? I'll put the recommendation then. It's moved by councillor Cordova, seconded by councillor Bain. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Motion is carried. Takes us to page 12, the matter in relation to Kingston Park, with a recommendation on page 17. And I'm looking for a mover and a seconder, please. Got a mover in councillor Street and a seconder in councillor Dean. Councillor Street?
Thank you, Mayor. The report itself is relatively self explanatory. It's a, a report on progress with works at Kingston Park and an update on the, on the undeveloped lots, obviously noting that we've parted ways with the original developer for the residential and commercial lots, traders in purple. As the public may or may not be aware, that's happened for a number of reasons, not least that construction costs in relation to, to those proposed developments have skyrocketed, together with issues that occurred over the COVID-19 period, albeit now being some time ago. But many will have noted that that's when things really did start to, to slow down at Kingston Park and never really commenced again. Notwithstanding that, I think we can quite rightly be proud of the public spaces that have been constructed at Kingston Park. And certainly, for my part, very keen to have the, the remaining vacant lots developed. It's one of those paradoxes that despite housing demand in Kingborough never having been higher, I think both anecdotally and statistically, we're in a position where construction costs are such that, that seemingly traders in purple could not make that stack up. So that really leads me to my question, Mayor, which is, in terms of the work that we're doing for the future of Kingston Park, are we placing any priority on a, a public tender process for any of those remaining lots and talking with the, the development industry, property development industry about opportunities for those blocks going forward?
The CEO?
Through you, Mayor. So I guess this paper is response to a notice motion to provide an update with a number of criteria, which has been done through this paper. As you alluded to, when we by mutual decision parted ways in terms of the, the development agreement with traders in purple, it was because the, the higher density developments, as you, as you rightly say, were sort of cost prohibitive to undertake at that time. Since, since that time, we've had a number of conversations with potential options to develop in Kingston Park. Things like large format retail have clear interests within the, within the precinct and are crying out for access to, to land to develop those types of commercial offerings within our greater municipal area. One of the challenges we've got is we do have a, a plan for, for Kingston Park, which has been adopted by council. And then there's the special area plan that from a planning perspective sits across the top of it. These types of developments are not necessarily aligned to firstly, the master planning and secondarily, secondarily the SAP that we have in place. So through this, this process and this paper, we're seeking council, I guess, response to the fact that, that there's a subsequent piece of work needed to be done, which reconsiders the land we have available, what type of land use the council would be interested in undertaking within this area. And then that will allow us to be able to go into a broader market engagement around who out there could develop in the way that council is looking for. Through the engagement with real estate firms, who are obviously acting on behalf of potential users of this land, we have a relatively good idea of some of the, the, the use case here, but that's probably not full, full, as fulsome as it could be. So testing the market through, you know, competitive tender process or other ways is something that we can undertake. But, but primarily in the first instance, we need to understand, understand what council's aspirations are for what is a jewel in the heart of Kingston in terms of the land and as you rightly say, right next to a prime development of public open space.
Councillor Street?
Everyone else. Mayor, do we still have a relationship with KPMG as a land disposal? Mayor, do we still have a relationship with KPMG as a land disposal consultant?
CEO.
Through you mayor. So we, we do have a relationship. We haven't been availing ourselves of that in recent times. You know, that comes at a cost and, and with the, the relationship with traders having been on pause, we haven't been utilizing any consultancy services with them. We could naturally pick that up, but I think we'd want to consider who's out there in the market prior to undertaking any further work in this space to understand the, the skills and competencies of any consultant before we go down that pathway.
Councillor Street.
And if there's an opportunity to, to expedite the process by engaging with external support, that's something that will be brought to council for budgetary consideration?
The CEO.
Through, through this paper, you'll note that it's, it mentions that there would likely be to, to be able to move this forward, the need for some external support. We don't have either the, the free and available resource internally or necessarily the expert and expertise in all these areas internally to, to pick this up and move it forward. We'd need to consider how we funded that. There are potentially some budget lines that we could make available to move this in the short term, whilst we then consider into, into the next financial year, what more substantive investment from council might look like. But that's, what I don't want to do is put this off for, you know, another budget cycle when there could be some, some work that we would undertake using, using existing, existing operational budget lines to be able to undertake some initial movement in this space.
Councillor Street.
Thank you mayor. Look, that, that answers my questions. I suppose the final point that I make is that certainly a balancing act, I understand that in terms of not wanting to, to develop what is the last pieces of, of open space land in central Kingston purely for the sake of having something developed. But from a, from a rate payer's perspective, there is also the consideration of the money that we've borrowed for, for significant and worthy works at Kingston Park, there's no doubt about that. But obviously the sooner, in my view, that we can be getting a return on the, on the remaining land, the better.
Thank you councillor Street. Further speakers, councillor Cordova and then councillor Antoli.
Thank you mayor. I support the motion. I think we do need a review of the Kingston Park development plan. It says here though, that the council will undertake the review. So there's, there's a couple of points that I think that, that I'd like to make. This is a really important piece of land, a lot of investment has already gone into it, and there's a great deal of community expectation around it. I think we probably need to re-establish a baseline of what the community actually wants. And I do note that at seven point two in the report, it says, and I'm quoting now, as part of any review of the development plan, council will need to determine the extent and process for re-engagement with the community. There's always the, we have to tread carefully. People sometimes don't want to be, you can kind of, you can, we, we need to have a meaningful engagement, and so we need to reset a baseline because what people wanted ten or twelve years ago may very well be different from what people want today. And on this notion that the council undertakes the review, I think I'm happy with, at this initial stage, when we scope out the, the extent of what this development plan will look like, that's fine for council to do it, but I'd like to see some kind of independent assessment as well now. And that just means that we're kind of at arm's length, rather than us once again, relitigating what we think should happen at Kingston Park. Wouldn't it be better to have some kind of external facilitator or independent facilitator to, to work with us to, to do that? That's an open-ended question. Happy to receive some feedback if, if there's...
CEO.
Yeah, through you mayor. I think we need to be cautious about seeking independent advice on everything that we do. The reason being because some of this is fundamentally our job to deliver. And if we're kicking, kicking to touch and getting independent people to come in and do our job for us at each stage, then we're probably not also doing our job. So I think we need to consider what the process is, how we would undertake the next steps and, and basically the, the, the recommendation and the drafted resolution here is for us to undertake that review of the development plan, looking at what the options might be and how we would go there. So there's no fixed mindset at this point in time about how we do that. It's indicating a desire to work towards an outcome where we are in a position to be able to make better decisions around Kingston Park. I take your point and, and I guess we will factor that into our thinking around how we approach the next steps.
Councillor Cordova.
Thank you for that answer. Through you mayor. The other points that I'd like us to consider are, if we are going to be reviewing the special area plan, the SAP, can we open the door to a more flexible mixed-use zoning? For example, to include health and aged care. Originally in the plan, there were, there was notions around aged care or other facilities going into that area. I guess my, if this were, yeah, it's a question, how open-minded are we to, to changing of use or, or altering that SAP?
CEO.
Through you mayor. The, the SAP is fundamentally the output that comes off the back of the master plan for the, for the site. Obviously, there's a process to go through to, to have a SAP changed and, and, you know, there's a conversation that we have with the TPC around, around that. So I guess it depends what the output of that master planning process is. What are the things that we want to see within this, within this specific area that we're talking about? And then once we've determined what that is, we can overlay the, the, the planning tools that we need to be able to enable that outcome. So I, I guess there's a willingness from, from a council staff perspective to explore what are the, the, the best land uses that we can do here, acknowledging the, the financial imperative that councillor Street pointed out, and the, the long-term outcome that this has for an area that is both right next to that, that really valuable public open space and some of the last vestiges of open space within the CBD area of Kingston. So that's a long way of saying, yep, we're open to, to what the solutions might be, but we need to think through that, both strategically and financially as part of the consideration.
Thank you. Just one more question through you mayor.
Councillor Cordova.
This now relates to, and I, I'm hopeful that we could be open to considerations regarding council considering a more active involvement in things like build to rent, affordable housing, public-private partnerships, instead of outright sale of, of various lots. Basically what I'm saying is rather than selling the family silver, I think there's a lot of opportunities that, that still need to be explored. So I don't want to obviously preempt what the development plan will say, but I think we just need to pay mind to addressing some of those critical concerns around housing crisis and growing financial inequality. Reflecting on the original master plans that went in, where consultants were engaged inspiring place in places like that, when community consultation took place, essentially everybody wanted a thriving commercial, public open space, they wanted walkable areas where people brought nature into the centre and areas where the people would want to stop, stick, stay and spend. This idea that, yeah, I guess bringing nature into the centre, I think that's why things like having a street tree strategy developed for that area could be, would, would be no bad thing. Also paying mind to encouraging nightlife and the kind of businesses that we, that we draw into the CBD, I think there's a lot of work to be done around encouraging nightlife. That, that brings with it not just commercial opportunities, but also a more vibrant and thriving place where we can attract, we can attract young families to, you know, it becomes a more thriving, uh, commercial area. And then I just think that the way in which we engage with the community needs to make sure that we avoid consultation fatigue, but we also get the information from the community that is reflective, not just of, not, not just reflective of some particular interests, but a broad section of the community. So I'm particularly concerned about making sure that currently people who don't have access to transport, for example, how are we going to make sure that we work with the state government to, to make sure that people can actually access this place, that we have more frequent and reliable public transport, that it's in the right spot, that it's affordable, all those kinds of things. So I think it's a terrific opportunity. I, I welcome the review and I look forward to the next steps. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Cordova. Next I had councillor Antoli.
Thank you mayor. So my read is that the report is, yeah, there are two recommendations, a possible in-house review from council strategic planning staff and an external review. The first one is cheaper, but it will be delayed. The second one is more expensive, but we could probably get it happening. So when you say strategic planning staff, I'm, I'm assuming you're referring to our planners who are currently completely ensconced in the LPS process, is that right?
The CEO.
Yeah, through, excuse me, through you mayor. So there would be a number of people internally that would, would contribute to a piece of work internally around moving a review forward of the sort. Obviously, planning staff are, are part of that. There's other people in the organisation as well, we're drawing their skill set. There is limited available capacity within work programmes to undertake that immediately. So I guess in the first instance, if council was to pass the resolution as drafted, I would be having a conversation with the team about what, what the required first steps are, how we might undertake that, the relative cost in that, with a view of freeing up some operational investment by, by prioritizing this over something else in order to get the piece of work underway whilst we look at what a more fulsome approach might be to be able to make sure that we're going to get to the endpoint that we need to with the right information to be able to come back to council with, with what a proposed approach might be to, to look at the, the lots that we have there, the master planning, those types of things. So this is the first step in what would be a multi-step process.
Councillor Antoli.
Thank you. Appreciate that response. Look, we all know here that as a council, we're probably out of ideas and out of options. We have really been thinking this through a lot. We've workshopped it. I think it's time for some external brains, someone smart, and I would be happy to approve...
We're not gonna, we're not gonna take that as a backhanded...
Sorry, I certainly did not mean it that way. I meant people with specific, sorry Daniel, I did not mean that. Some, you're very intelligent and mensile.
Okay, let's not...
I meant people with specific expertise that do this for a living, because there are a number of options out there. And I would be one to put money behind it. We're thirteen point nine million dollars in the hock, we're paying over six hundred thousand dollars in interest, this is costing us a lot of money. And I really don't want to be seeing this kicked down the road until the start of twenty twenty-six. So I'm all for giving you the delegated authority, as intelligent as you are, to get this happening so we can get this land off our hands, the debt off our hands and have that area down there humming.
The CEO.
Yeah, through you mayor. So absolutely, if you pass this resolution tonight, we'll be getting, getting the ball rolling. And again, we don't have a specific in-to-in plan at this stage. We'd need to be thinking about what that looks like in terms of the short term, you know, getting us through into, into subsequent budgets and then what, what investment might be required there. But I understand the imperative that exists around this land. In saying that, there's not always going to be a magic bullet to, to be able to achieve everything we want, so there'll need to be trade-offs that we have through that. But I appreciate the comment around, you know, making sure that we've got the right expertise that's advising council on, on the next steps here, because we need to make sure that we're, we're, we're making the right calls, right? You only get to make these decisions once and, and we need to make sure that they're the right ones. So, you know, making sure that we've got the right independent experts as part of that process is just us doing our job.
Any further discussion? Is that a hand up councillor Dean? No, that's just, you're just waving at me. Okay, any, summing up councillor Street? No. I'm going to put the recommendation, moved by councillor Street, seconded by councillor Dean. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against, motion is carried unanimously. Takes us to page eighteen, Kingborough Community Grants with a recommendation on the following page. And I'm looking for a mover and a seconder please. Councillor Cordova and seconded councillor Bain. Councillor Cordova. Sorry, councillor Fox.
I have a declaration of interest to make. I forgot to at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay.
But I'll be staying in the room. I'm a member of the Houghton Progress Association, which stands to gain from this decision, but I'll be staying in the room.
Thank you councillor Fox.
Thank you.
Mrs Morton will note that and get you to fill out a form. Councillor Cordova.
Thank you mayor. It's my great privilege to be able to move this. This is where the rubber hits the road really, for council engaging directly with community groups who do a power of work, helping people out, giving us a greater sense of identity and a sense of place. The innumerable hours that volunteers have spent building community and building friendships and volunteering their time, we owe them an enormous debt of gratitude. So it's a great privilege to be able to recommend that seventeen thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars is allocated towards thirteen projects throughout the municipality. All of those are listed in the report here. And I just want to take a special, I guess, take a moment to provide a special thanks to all the members of those community groups and all the other community groups, encourage people to apply for this council funding. This is, you know, it makes a big difference and it's one of those things where we're building a stronger community together by, by having these kinds of initiatives. So once again, thank you to all of those volunteers and I hope the money really helps in your, in your engagement with your community and we thank you for it. Thanks mayor.
Thank you councillor Cordova. Councillor Dean.
Thank you mayor. Just a few questions to me just around the process. The first one will be the feedback. I'm just curious as to what the feedback is that those, particularly those that are unsuccessful, what is it they receive?
Miss Jakuti.
Through you mayor. We contact them directly and we will provide a reason, a reason or reasons why they were not eligible. And if you have a look in the guidelines, we assess each application in terms of meeting those guidelines for eligibility. And then sometimes unfortunately, applications are, are not complete or missing quite a bit of information as well. So we'll provide that feedback to each applicant.
Councillor Dean.
Thanks. I'll just, I don't, I don't feel in any position to be able to say one way or another because these have been assessed by the offices against the guidelines. I just note that there seem to be quite a few that were fairly similar in terms of what they're applying for, whether it was for example, junior sporting equipment. Sometimes they would say it was not the interest of the community, then they were supported. I guess I don't want to dig into each application, but just from a staff perspective, do we feel comfortable that there is strong enough criteria so that we can go back and when it's clear, they don't, you know, they're an ongoing running cost, clear? It doesn't. We can't fund that kind of thing. But when there is a little bit of gray, do we feel as an organisation that the criteria is set strong enough so that when we're essentially, I say marking these, that we can go back and say, absolutely, this is where on say a rubric or a criteria why we haven't funded and this is what you'll need to do next time around?
Miss Jakuti.
Through you mayor. Yes, I believe the criteria are strong enough and our process is robust. So it goes through, I suppose, a two-phase assessment process where our community development officers will actually score against criteria. And then it comes to a panel that includes myself and Mr Smee, our director of property and governance. And we assess each on its merit as well. We'll often, if we don't think certain criteria are met, but others are, that's when we might look at partial funding, for example, so it's not a blanket no for all applications. And then we will provide, I suppose, clear and direct feedback to our applicants.
Councillor Dean.
Thank you. That's good to hear. Look, just to follow up in terms of some of the, I say events where we've provided funding, I suppose in kind in terms of the hire of, of the hub, sometimes it's a thousand and sometimes it seems to be fifteen hundred for items nineteen and twenty. Could it just maybe just be explained, and there's probably a really good reason why there's an inconsistency between what we seem to be providing some and then, for example, item fourteen, which is also a festival, received a thousand for the, sorry, I'm a croaky, for the hub.
Miss Jakuti.
Through you mayor. A little bit difficult to talk to specifics without the application material in front of me. The applications are often quite detailed, we'll provide a detailed breakdown of the costs and the funding required, and we'll often use that breakdown to determine which, for example, parts of the application meet the criteria to fund and maybe some that don't. So it can result in some variation between different applications.
Councillor Dean.
Look, if I could just make that comment then, if it could just be triple-checked that there is no inconsistency in terms of providing, if we're just providing hub that hire in-kind fees, that they're, they're consistent across or whatever it is. And then obviously just make the point that there were, I think this is third or fourth year now that we're, in my time, assessing these, and there were a lot that were unsuccessful. And a lot of applications, which is great, I don't think we've ever had this many, but out of the fifty-four thousand, only seventeen thousand has been approved. So there's going to be quite a few people who will feel a missed out. So there's going to be quite a few people who will feel a missed out, understandably. But in those guidelines, I saw right at the bottom, it does obviously advocate strongly to the applicant that they meet with the officers and hopefully in the future, we can kind of avoid those disappointments by making quite clear there are some things that clearly aren't fit and meet the guidelines so that we can kind of maybe avoid those applications coming in to begin with.
Thank you. If I can just, in response to that highlight, that there is $12,000 that is left over from the $30,000 that is allocated and that is to be used for quick response grants of up to $1,000. They are particularly sought after throughout the year for things that, I guess, unplanned at the time of the grants application process going forward. So that tends to get a lot of call for events and things at the hub and other activities such as that. So I've got no doubt that by the end of the financial year, we would have fully expended those quick response grants as well. And I know it's disappointing for those community groups that have applied and have been unsuccessful. We certainly would encourage them to get that feedback and see if they can improve their application for future years and certainly do engage with us in future years. But unfortunately, in any grants programme, we can't meet the requests of all of the community groups. And probably just add what, I can't remember, I think it was councillor Cordova said it earlier, the work that all of those groups do and their associated volunteers, we certainly appreciate and acknowledge. So thank you. Anything further from you councillor Dean? No, I think I had councillor Antaly next.
Thank you, Mayor. You've answered one of my questions. I appreciate that. And this is part of what we do that I love. And you know that I'm always banging on that we probably should spend more money in this particular department. And I think that we've got a lot of fantastic community groups that we need to support. Big shout out to the Kingston Neighbourhood Watch, which is resurrecting. We used to have the biggest neighbourhood watch in Tasmania. And neighbourhood watch is actually going through a bit of a renaissance in Tasmania. And I'm excited about that because they're a volunteer-based crime prevention organisation. And that's what we love about them. And I heard some laughter. Was that in support? No, I just wasn't sure what the laughter was about. And I also want a big shout out to Kingborough Community Missions, who are doing a fantastic job as well. And like councillor Cordova said, some people missed out, but hopefully they can learn how to be spot on. And we need money left over for those emergency grants. So thanks to the, I believe it was Carol Sward as well and her team that worked on this. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Big shout out to them for the work that they do. They are always doing a great job. I'm a big fan of our community development team over there.
Thank you councillor Antaly. Any further discussion? Councillor Cordova. No summing up? Okay. So I'm going to put the recommendation moved by councillor Cordova and seconded by councillor Bain. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried. Takes us to the appendices on page 25 with the recommendation on the same page. I'm looking for a mover and a seconder, please. Got a moved councillor Cordova and seconded councillor Bain. Any questions on the appendices? Oh, don't be shy. No, all right. Put the recommendation then. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried. Page 25, notices of motion, there were no notices of motion. And it takes us to confirmation of items to be dealt with in closed session. In accordance with Regulation 17 of the Local Government Meeting Procedures Regulations 2025, council by absolute majority moves into closed session to consider the following items. Confirmation of minutes. Applications for leave of absence. Tender AB2515, replacement of three medium trucks for the parks and reserves crew. Tender assessment AB2514. Sandfly Road shoulder ceiling. And Kingston Beach Surf Life Saving Proposed Development. And I'm looking for a mover and a seconder. I've got a mover in councillor Cordova and a seconder in councillor Fox. All those in favour? Against? Motion is carried. That brings the open session of the council meeting to an end. Thank you to those members of the community who are with us this evening. That does mean that you do need to leave us now while we go into closed session. For those who are watching along at home, we thank you also. In accordance with the Kingborough Council Meeting Audio Recording Guidelines policy, recording of the open session of the meeting will now cease and open session of council adjourned at 7.08pm. Closed session.